Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. The city council meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Ruby?
Here.
Tilberg?
Here.
Kosarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our council meeting with the pledge of allegiance, and while I have not yet briefed this young lady, I'm going to ask the chairwoman of our DEI task force to please lead us in the pledge. Well, then heck. How about our 20... Put it this way, how about our recent Wood Award winner, Mr. Jay Womack?
Not recent. One year.
It's recent.
Really recent.
Yeah, it's recent. Absolutely. Seems like just yesterday.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Forgive me for not recognizing... Ashley was not present tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, our item 3A is to recognize the City of Geneva's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. I want to begin with just a couple of comments, if I may, then I'm going to invite the task force members to join us up front. We have a special token of appreciation for you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing the City of Geneva's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force, an expeditionary force, if you will, who enthusiastically raised their hands to volunteer to help our community become the best version of ourselves. The DEI task force held its first meeting on June 16, 2021. Their wrap-up meeting was held on December 6, 2023. That's two years, five months, and 20 days. Or if you prefer, a 903-day journey to research, dialogue, and take action by hearing from 500-plus residents of our community, 22 personal interviews with community leaders, 10 public focus groups, all to help this community, and most importantly, our residents and our guests, to feel welcomed, included, and empowered. From this data, the DEI task force extrapolated several themes and recommendations. They're going to share definitions of diversity, equity, and inclusion, establish a part-time role within the City of Geneva to lead DEI initiatives, conduct a biannual community forum, and create comprehensive and virtual accessibility guides. The research revealed Genovans share a very strong commitment and sense of belonging. However, there are areas of improvement to ensure that Geneva continues to prosper as a safe, inclusive, and award-winning city. Who would like to speak on behalf of the task force? The enthusiasm is overwhelming.
Jean McMillan.
Jean McMillan, come on up! That's...
Always count on Jay to volunteer people for something.
And for the record, that is Dr. McMillan.
COVID.
Yes, it is. Dr. McMillan. Dr. McMillan, good evening and welcome.
On behalf of the DEI task force, I just want to thank everyone here for their just tremendous support of the work that we did. It was not easy. There were times where we wondered, what road do we go down? Who do we talk to next? Where do we go? But I think one of the things that I think was so enduring about our group was just our strong sense of commitment and collaboration. So we all came from very diverse backgrounds and lived experiences with diversity challenges in our own lives, and I think it was that passion that fueled our commitment to doing the work. And so while we know that we've only scratched the surface, we have so much more to do, we really appreciate that you are championing our efforts and that you're supporting our recommendations to move forward into the future with a more solidified presence in our community. So we just want to thank you for the opportunity and the honor of serving on this task force, and you'll see us again, I promise you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In fact, Dr. McMillan alluded to this. The city is reviewing the report's recommendations, and it is likely, as many of you know, that we will be establishing a permanent committee, and we invite all of you to keep your eyes peeled for communication in that regard. So, Dr. McMillan, do you want to introduce anyone else, or should I invite each and every member to come on up?
Oh, I think they need to come up.
Oh, you do?
Yes, come on up.
Oh, that's good. This is good. And don't be shy. Say hello.
Can I say, go ahead and share your name?
Yeah, share your name and...
My name is Solva Grandwick, and it was a pleasure to be part of the task force. I've met a lot of great people. I've met a lot of great people of this city of Geneva, of the community. So this was a great opportunity for me personally, and I love what the task force did.
Excellent. Hi.
Crystal Forrest, hi, everyone. I just wanted to thank you all for just allowing this to...
I'm going to invite you up to the microphone there, so...
No pressure. Allowing this to happen, it was so great to just feel backed up and supported, and it's very important for my young girls in the audience...
Oh, fun!
...just to see that they live in such a great city. And then wanted to thank my task force members. They're all so kind, selfless, just beautiful people, and I just had such a pleasure these past two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Cervenka signed in, and I have been thrilled to be a part of this. It's meant a lot to me. I'm a very proud Jewish woman living in this community, so that's not always the easiest thing. And I also have my lovely children, including my non-binary child, Charlie, who has inspired me to speak up for everyone. And so I think this community has been wonderful, but I think we do have work to do, and so I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to do the work.
Absolutely.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Christine Kelly. I have been so grateful for this opportunity. I've learned so much. I graduated from Geneva High School last year, so growing up in this town and kind of experiencing certain things, I was grateful to be able to provide a different kind of perspective, I guess. And so even though I am not here anymore, coming back here, I just feel so much pride to stand with this group, and so I just thank you for considering all of our things.
Christine, where are you now?
Rochester, New York.
Whoa.
Yes.
And that's my choice.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's... And what are you doing in Rochester?
I'm... I go to the Eastman School of Music. I'm studying vocal performance and...
Is that right?
...media communications, a dual-degree major.
Operatic or...
Yes, classical.
Wow. We should have began the meeting with singing at the National Anthem. My favorite uncle.
Hey, guys. Oh, about to break everything up here. I'm Greg Albert. I've been a part of this community for the last 30 years, and it wasn't until I joined the DEI task force that I got to know a lot of my neighbors, and this has been an amazing experience, and I look forward to continuing to work in whatever capacity the mayor or the city council needs me to work in, freshly retired.
Freshly?
Freshly.
How fresh is fresh?
May of this year.
No kidding?
So...
And where did you retire from, Greg?
I retired from a company called Univar Solutions, a chemical company.
Of course.
Worked for them for a short period of time. My background is primarily medical sales, medical equipment, medical supplies.
Wow.
So thanks again. Thanks for the opportunity, and as I said, I look forward to continuing to work with all of you.
Now, for those of you in the council, you know this story, but for those of you tuning in, Mr. Albert and the chairwoman had the pleasure of attending the strategic planning workshop the council held in November, and you shared with us that the neighbor kids refer to you as Uncle Greg.
Well, the original neighbor kids.
Oh, you've lived there so long!
Yeah, yeah, those kids have come back with their kids.
Ah!
However, I still do have a couple of houses with original kids, and, you know, and they still refer to me as Uncle Greg. You know, these kids drive by and they wave, "Hey, Uncle Greg," and it's like, hey.
Life is good!
So I get these strange looks sometimes, but it's okay. It's all good.
It's all good.
It's all good.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Luis Amaya, I just want to thank the city council, previous members, current members, SPAC, for everyone for putting this all together. This task force was amazing. I learned so much over the past two years plus, and it was a great opportunity. I look forward to see how I can continue to support this community, which is now our community.
Fantastic.
So very happy to be here and obviously see what the DEI task force did, you know, with the city of Geneva.
Are you willing to share what you learned most?
You know what I think helped me most was like the broader view of DEI. Everyone always kind of looks at DEI and like a couple, you know, the easy things, right?
Sure.
Where I think it really opened things up. We had a couple, you know, attendees to our meetings that would consistently, you know, bring up some of the issues they faced, and as you start to look at it from a different lens, I think you really appreciate why it's so important to have, you know, the DEI, you know, in the community. So that was kind of the biggest thing for me, was kind of looking at it from a different lens, so...
Well said.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Byrne.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to add anything?
I think it helped us.
Oh, come on up to the microphone.
I too feel like the rest of my team members, that we all learn from each other and learn from many of our guests that participated, and I learned a lot also. It was important to have someone as young as Christine because it brought something different that maybe we would not have experienced otherwise. So it was great that she was selected, and so again, we were missing our leader tonight, and so she brought amazing, amazing talent.
Extraordinary.
And I cannot be grateful enough to her, and I hope all of you, I think you've heard her many times, and she has really done an amazing job, so has everybody else, and thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Well, at the December 6 meeting, it was an intimate setting. We met in the conference room next door, and I think it's a fair statement to say that those present, there was this collective gasp of, "Well, we did it, and now the real work begins." So it's pretty awe-inspiring, and all of you are obviously not only valued, appreciated, recognized, but we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, too, because as Dr. McMillan said, you knew it wasn't going to be easy, but nothing easy shows how good you are. You guys are all good. So with that, may I present you with a token of our appreciation, but before I do, I'll open it up to the dais for any comments from the council members. Alder Person Kosarag.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for what you guys did. I think it was really important for the City of Geneva to move us forward like this, and I look forward to seeing, as Mayor Byrne said, what the real work is and getting that going and making sure we continue to support the findings that you guys came up with. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Alder Person Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, that, you know, I grew up here. I went to Geneva High School way, way back, and I really appreciate that this is happening and that we're bringing diversity and equity and inclusion to Geneva. I think it's super important, and I thank you all for your effort.
Anyone else? If not, ready for some photos?
Sure.
Does that sound good? Let's go to the car and grab them. Where is it? No, sorry. I'm going to invite Ben to head out to where you are. I'm going to... I want to, Ben, do you just grab one of those, maybe the chairwoman's? I want everyone to see this. We have a young lady in town who has her own business, and we asked her for something special to recognize the important work you did. I think this young lady created something that is extraordinary, and I think it reflects the diversity in its colors. It has your name on there. It has the city seal on there. It recognizes you for your service, and it looks something like this. Isn't that beautiful?
Thank you. Very cool.
So these are coasters because I saw how much coffee you drank during the day. So that's a fall for you, so...
We did Zoom 7:00 AM, and even before, was it 6:30 one morning? Yeah.
I know.
So there was coffee.
A lot of Zooms, too. A lot of Zooms.
Sure.
I'm going to invite all of you up here. Everybody get a cool picture. Check that out.
This costs six bucks.
We got a discount.
Wine, cheese, and trees!
And one more. This is a big group. All right.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Liz?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Charlie, go. Everyone hold up your lovely gifts. Check that out.
We got a discount.
Wine, cheese, and trees!
And one more. This is a big group. All right.
the pleasure of introducing our newest staff member. Actually, not too new, but last time we wanted to recognize this young lady, she unfortunately wasn't feeling well, so it's a pleasure tonight to recognize Jessica... No, where's Jessica? Hey, hey, come on up, Jessica. Why are you sitting in the back?
Hiding.
Hiding?
Yeah.
Now, you've been on board for...
Uh, be almost four months.
Utility billing specialist.
Yes.
So you hang out across the street.
I do.
And you take all the calls from people who said, "I swear to God, I paid my utility bill."
Sounds about right.
Is that right? How many people do you speak to daily?
Um...
Is it like a lot?
No, a handful.
Yeah?
Yeah. A lot of people pay their bills online and...
Oh, sure.
Throw a check in the Dropbox, so it's pretty...
I always ask this question of our utility billing specialists, are all of us up to speed on our utility bills?
I think so. There's a lot of names.
Do you know there's a law in Illinois that you cannot serve an office unless you... your utility bills are paid in full?
I don't know.
That's true. Is it not true?
Well, there's still violations.
You cannot owe any debt to the city.
Ah.
Do you have something to admit? Alder Person Mayor?
I believe you're lying.
Now, Jessica, you say that this is your first time working in a city job and an office job.
That is correct.
You've worked in and out of restaurants for the past 16 years. Wow.
Yep.
And define that in one word.
Working in a restaurant? Hectic.
Why the change in direction, if you will?
A better life for myself.
Yeah.
It was getting to me, being on my feet for 16-plus years, and it's a lot.
Wow.
Yeah.
May I ask where you grew up?
I grew up in Bolingbrook.
Oh, you did?
Yes. I still live out there, too.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Well, that's a heck of a commute.
It is, but I used to work out in Batavia before this, so I was used to it.
Wow.
I liked the mindset to drive and decompress.
About 45 minutes or so?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to kind of decompress, exactly.
I like it.
Wow. Do you take the surface streets or you take 355?
Um, I try to avoid tolls, so I take the side road.
We don't even pay tolls. It's like, just right through them. And most importantly, you love to spend time with your daughter.
I do.
And what's your daughter's name?
Isabella.
Isabella. May I ask how old Isabella is?
Sure. She just turned 11.
Oh, fun!
Yeah.
That's middle school.
Uh, she's fifth grade, so not yet, next year.
Oh!
She's behind. She has a late birthday, so...
Fun!
Yeah. Fun age.
You rolled your eyes when you said that.
She's a handful.
Is she tuning in tonight, watching?
Probably not. She's probably taking a nap, knowing her.
Oh, yeah? Well, if you give us her email address, we'll send her a link to this.
She won't care.
So far, so good across the street.
Yes, I'm enjoying it.
It's a good team, isn't it?
It is. I enjoy everyone over there.
Yeah, aren't they great?
They're very helpful, especially with me learning this for the first time, they're very helpful.
And you decorated your office?
I did.
And the judging is Wednesday?
Um, fingers crossed.
Well, I'm not a judge this year.
Oh.
We have a police and fire commissioner.
Okay.
We have a bike and pedestrian plan commissioner, and we have a member of the Strategic Plan Advisory Commission.
Okay. So we have hopes.
You do have hopes, yeah. Do you know what first place prize is this year?
No.
Does anybody?
Lunch.
No, no, it's lunch at the Mill Race. No, it's like, no. Should I have not said that? Don't repeat this. Whatever you do. Open the floor to the council. What are you doing for the holidays? Is it any fun?
Uh, no.
Hanging out? Are you all caught up with shopping? You celebrating?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I'm a last-minute person sometimes.
Yeah? Well, there's some cool joints around here to shop.
Yeah, I just went shopping with my cousin, so before this, because I didn't want to drive all the way home and come back.
Is your cousin here?
Yeah.
Where?
Olivia.
Ah!
From Public Works.
From Public Works. She works here.
Oh, you're kidding?
No.
Wow, this... And you're sitting next to what's-his-face?
Yeah.
Wow. Well, we are delighted to welcome you formally to the team, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And enjoy the remainder of your night, and be careful driving. Do you guys commute together?
No, she lives over here.
Ah, okay.
I have to commute.
Oh, my God. Be careful driving.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good...
Look at that, cousins, that's cool. Item C, folks. This is new, never heard of this before. Presentation on Wine, Cheese, and Trees event, February 24, 2024. My God, that seems a thousand years away, doesn't it?
Not when you have to organize it.
And Mr. Jay, is it Womack?
Could you pronounce that again, please?
Welcome, Mr. Womack.
Thank you. Thank you. Always fun to be here. I realized I hadn't been here in a long time, so...
It has been a long time.
I brought some crew with me.
Excellent.
We've got some really nice outerwear that shows off who we represent.
Wow, look at that.
I know.
Is there a sponsor name on the back or anything, or is it just brought to you by?
Brought to you by Budweiser. No. No, I've... We wanted to talk about Wine, Cheese, and Trees because I realized, you know, it's our 13th year, and I opened up my computer and I was going to write down some statistics, and I just realized that the last time we were probably... or the first time we were here talking about it was 2004, when we had the Emerald Dash Bor issue.
Oh, yeah?
And we lost about 2,800 trees just in our parkways alone. Some new faces, some original faces.
That's nice.
I've been with the NRC for 20 years now.
Incredible.
Been the chairperson for 17, but I wanted to just read you guys some statistics real quick. So we probably started this journey in about 2004. We started, we talked about a tree farm. I remember a presentation about that. In 2006, we planted our first tree. As of now, we've planted 555 trees all total.
Is that right?
Yeah. That's a far cry from 2,800. 253 are the NRCs, 300 are the Geneva Park District, and two are the Geneva Libraries. But what's interesting is when you start doing some true math, 253 trees planted by the NRC in the parkways, and like here at City Hall, few at... We just planted 20-some at the courthouse in the government center, but we pay full, almost full retail value for those trees because we buy them from a person that gives us a three-year warranty, Wasco Nursery. So when we started, they were probably $600 on average, because we have to plant about... we have to plant a two-inch caliber tree because it's a parkway tree. So you've got to be able to look underneath it, can't poke you in the eye, you've got to be able to drive underneath it. Today, they're running closer to between $800 and $900 a tree. Yeah. So if you multiply 253 times 600, just using the low end of the scale, that's $151,800.
Wow.
If you multiply it by 700, that just jumps up to $177,100. That doesn't even include our time, all the work that we've done. You could probably triple that for the work that we've done. It's a lot from volunteers to provide, which we do it out of the love of our heart. We do it because we love the environment. We do it because we love this... we love each other. We're family. We have fun. We planted a lot of trees in the parkways, and so one of the things that we'd love to ask, because there's always an ask, isn't there? There's a however, or a but, or a why. We'd like to have a little more support in maintaining and watering those trees. So a great example is the drought that we just suffered this last summer. I personally carried probably 800 gallons of water across the street from the post office to the All Chocolate Kitchen in five-gallon buckets once a week to water those trees because I couldn't see them die again, because Wasco Nursery's on the hook. They don't say, "Did you guys water them?" They say, "Okay, we'll replace them because we honor them for three years." There's a few trees that are out there that they still need to replace on our behalf, but we'd like a little more help with watering and maintaining. Just watering the trees once a month would be a huge thing. I mean, these, especially for the first two to three years of their lives, they need our help. You know, we can't just stick a tree in the parkway and call it good. Our parkways are the worst place to plant a tree, usually. They're compacted soils, they don't have any nutrients, they are, they see the salt, they see the roadway dirt, they see the grime, so they just need our help. So I'd love to get, you know, some more support or help than all of us would of watering those trees once in a while. So I know we've, we've, we try to work with Public Works, we know they're very busy, but we've committed, you know, two thousand six, I'm not good with math, but two thousand six to two thousand twenty-three, that's almost twenty years of planting trees. So we'd love to get a little bit more support. I know we're working with Ben to do the fifty-fifty, or the, support the fifty-fifty program and get more trees out there. But that's our, that's, our ask is we'd love to see all of you again at Wine, Cheese, and Trees. We'd love to, if you want to be a sponsor, we're not going to stop you. I don't know what, you know, Martha is a great addition now that the Geneva Library Foundation is part of our group. They're, they're a wonderful group of people, and they've seen the power of Wine, Cheese, and Trees, they drank the Kool-Aid.
And it was virtually, it was SRO last year.
It was crazy.
I mean, it was a zoo.
We ran out of glasses within twenty minutes, and we had, we ordered three hundred and fifty.
Wow.
We had over four hundred people show up. We like to think of it as the, um, as the party of the year for the city of Geneva, because it's, I mean, we've gone everywhere from buying, you know, winning a mattress, to winning trips to Hawaii, to winning an instant wine cellar of a hundred bottles worth. So the people that won it last year went home and they looked up every single bottle and they wrote down what it was worth, it was sixty-five hundred dollars.
Wow.
And it was all donated by Paul Deshaun of Jackson Family Wines, and we're so, I don't use the word blessed very often, but we're so blessed to have him and be part of our group and support us. I used to go out and buy those bottles myself personally and try to find the biggest deal I could find. It's not easy.
What was the mattress worth?
I think it was worth like fifteen. It was nice. You did. We have that again this year. Uh, Dr. McMillan and her husband and her whole, whole family, I was just told, are going to, going to Hawaii in June because of last year's winnings.
Fantastic.
It's a lot of fun, and, but it's very purposeful. I mean, we, we do this because we want to get more trees in the ground, and we are planting trees all over the place now, and now that we've, we've got a little bit of a relationship with Kane County, they were so pleased, they couldn't believe when I emailed them and said, "Do you want a what?" So they had to take it to the board, it had to be approved, but we got trees planted at the government center. And, um, I remember coming in front of you guys and asking if we could plant a tree at each one of the schools, and we planted, I think, two. We planted all up and down Third. So we're going to now start to get tree tags that have the Wine, Cheese, and Trees logo on it, and it has the tree name, botanical common, and I think it's going to have a little tagline, "These trees were planted with public funds from Wine, Cheese, and Trees."
That's clever.
Yeah, so. Our agenda now goes to two pages, because we do so many things. Earth Day, pumpkin, the pumpkin smash was so much fun. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. Somebody went and, they left and came back with hammers, because we realized that a pumpkin smash, you've got to be able to smash the pumpkin. Oh, my gosh. I don't know how many thousands of pounds we've got, kept out of a landfill, but it was a lot. And a line of cars for two hours straight. Next year.
Almost three hundred pumpkins. Wow.
A lot, and they were all, and they were, they were full-sized pumpkins, too. That was fun. Our Earth Day event, we've been doing that for almost fifteen years now. The river cleanup, I don't know how much stuff, I feel bad for whoever goes and picks that stuff up. We pull more garbage out of the river. It's just, on, you know, and a lot of the, the groups under SPAC disband after a few years, because they met their goal. Our goal is never going to end. So I'm going to be here forever.
And the battle of the brush piles?
We had to cancel, I canceled it at the last minute, I know, and, um, we're going to try and do it on January sixth, but I've heard from a few teachers that that's the last, that's the tail end of Christmas break, so I'm going to try and move it forward another week or two and see if we can do it again, but. Geneva Middle School put a team together. They were coming out, they were ready to go. It's so much fun. When you teach people about the environment and why it's important, I've had kids walk up to me and say, "You know what, I, I'm only here because I need extra credit," and at the end of the day, they give me a hug and they thank me for what we do, and, and I had a girl tell me if I ever told anybody that she enjoyed this day, she would kill me. Yeah, seriously.
Well, that's now recorded, so now we know.
And I, I can't.
In case you go missing, so that's good.
But it is, it is fun to watch, and I'll tell you, the, the young ladies who come out, when you hand them a bow saw for the first time and they look at you like you've got two heads, but you show them how to use it, and then they just, they're, they're, they're gone.
That's great.
They're, it's so much fun.
So we expect just as much success on the twenty-fourth of February?
We have some amazing, I'm a, so I was going to send it out tonight, but I didn't. Uh, we have some amazing trips already lined up. If you want to go to Oregon, to the Willamette Valley, we've got wine, three places with wine tastings. I, um, I got a woman to, um, at a bed and breakfast called the Truskin Estates, say that if I'm willing to buy one, she'll donate two nights. Yeah, yeah, so Willamette Valley, Willamette, dammit. We've got Sonoma, we've got Seth Peterson, we've got Laurel Garza with her one week somewhere again. So this is the year of the trip. If you want to go someplace, come to Wine, Cheese, and Trees, we got, we got something for you. Yeah, it's amazing. And it's all donated, almost a hundred percent of it. That's the beauty of what it is that drives this to be so incredible, is it's all, it's all donated.
Well, it requires someone as passionate as you to lead us.
I love my job.
I know you do.
I do. I don't know how, I find the time sometimes, but I just, my wife looks at me and she's like, "How do you do it?"
Yes, I've seen her look at you like that.
Now, if you guys want to come down to the uncommon find and buy something and support her shop, that would be really nice, too.
There's the product placement we're waiting for. To the council, open it up, comments for anyone.
Yeah, please.
We're delighted to see such a great turnout, too. It's fantastic. Is everyone a wine drinker?
Oh, yeah.
No, yeah, wine drinker, I'm sure, should probably qualify that, shouldn't I? Yeah, come on up to the podium, big guy.
I, I guess our, our passion is, um, we spend, as, as Jay said, we're all volunteers. We do this because we love it. We don't do it for any other reason. We do it because we love this community for no other reason. And all we're asking is you to help us, really help us. We can't do it all. There's just not enough hours in the day, there's not enough people in the group, we're tired. But we'd really love the support, as, as Jay said, and a commitment from the city to really assist us and, and make this program a, a real significant success. I mean, as, as Jay said, last year, our Wine, Cheese, and Trees, we have four hundred people. We've never had that in the past. I know, because I was a wine pourer, and I poured for three and a half hours straight. Without, nonstop, exactly. So I guess, again, thank you all for listening, and we, I'm, as a pourer, I'm going to be looking for each and every one of you, so I better see you there.
Now, you do, you do something else, though, don't you, John, besides just volunteer here?
Yes, I am also the president of the Park District, uh, the Geneva Park District Board of Commissioners.
Yes, you are.
So I've been on, I've been doing that for thirteen, fourteen years.
And I must say that landscaping around your home in Pepper Valley looks lovely.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
We didn't pay for that.
I noticed Jay and the team out there helping you.
That's right. I think there are a couple people around this council chamber that have received some really nice help as well, which I love doing as well. I can't say no.
I know, you can't.
I can't.
It's unbelievable. Well, because you can't say no, because all of you say yes, we, we are very, very grateful, and we look forward to seeing you on the twenty-fourth. And of course, whatever you want to send electronically, you know, we could blast it out, all that good stuff, and.
Yep, we do, and we work with a lot of different groups, and we've got our social media page, and the Park District sends out a lot of good things, so. But what's amazing with everything that we do, it's still amazing how people haven't heard of Wine, Cheese, and Trees. I don't know how. It's like we're under a rock sometimes. I don't get it.
That's not uncommon, I think.
I guess. I don't take it personally anymore.
Well, it could be you, Jay. It could be you.
It could be. When I threatened everybody at the, uh, at the dinner, when I got the wood award, it probably, it probably didn't do me any good.
It was very exciting. Anyone on the council, any comments? Yes, Alder Person Ruby, Alder Person Bowery?
Thank you, thank you so much for everything. It's great to, to hear your presentation and to see you here. I was wondering if everyone who's here from your group could just introduce themselves?
Sure, please. Here, you start with Calvin.
Hi, Kelvin Lindbrink. I'm a certified arborist, and I love Geneva and trees, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Kelvin.
John Frankenthal, newly retired, as of, as of May of this year, but I was a former environmental consultant, and then I spent eighteen years with BP, Bridge Petroleum, in their environmental group, cleaning up refineries, pipelines, terminals, things like that.
Out of Naperville or downtown, or?
Uh, Naperville.
No kidding?
In the campus, yeah.
Wow, that's cool. Newly retired, man, life is good.
I'm Carrie Carter. I'm also newly retired. I was also an environmental consultant.
Is this, is this the requirement, Jay, to be newly retired?
No, I've been with the group for a long time.
No, I, I know, yeah, oh, absolutely. Hi there.
Rachel Rados, currently a stay-at-home mom, but formerly worked for the Natural Resource Conservation Service, so that's why I wanted to join this. Um, have also worked for Bear Crop Science on the commercial ag side and research development.
And the next time you see Rachel, she'll be sitting down, because she is expecting her second child.
And pregnant, yes.
Oh, no kidding? Wonderful. But she's still going to be there!
Yes. Buy rapid tickets.
Hi, I'm Mel Rooney. Um, I'm a stay-at-home mother. I've been a resident of Geneva for twelve years, um, more than, I volunteer a lot, and, but this is actually like my favorite group, because I just feel like we really are bringing something to Geneva that, um, is missing. So I really feel passionate about it as a stay-at-home mother.
So the McMillans were both on, so Janine and her husband Adam were on the group for a while. They still are, they're on our letterhead, they're on our agenda, uh, but with two kids and very active family, they've, will take a little hiatus, but I think one of them, if not both, will be back at some point.
Anything else, Alder Person Ruby?
Oh, thank you.
Alder Person Bowery?
Hi, thank you so much for being here and for all the work that you do. I wanted to circle back and just ask a few questions, if you don't mind, about your asks.
Yeah.
I'm curious, so we've gotten parkway trees as residents. I imagine that you're talking about, because the residents who engage in the program are asked to water the trees at least the first year, and this time, because we did this twice, this time we got, uh, tree bags delivered, which made it a lot easier, um, and more efficient to water them. I assume that you're talking about trees that are not in front of residences, and I was curious if you could give a ballpark figure of how many trees that is in a given year?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the NRC right now is not allowed to plant a tree in front of a person's house, because.
I see, so this is separate from that program?
Correct.
But similar, okay.
But similar, yes, exactly. So the bulk of our trees have been planted surprisingly right here on Third and on some of the side streets. So we planted a lot of the trees within the business district.
Okay.
Because we can't, we, we can't plant a tree in front of a person's house, because that would be considered favoritism, because of the fifty-fifty program.
Sure.
However, we are thinking about doing some sort of a lottery system, where maybe we take a couple streets that we know are in need of a tree, or ten, or a hundred, and putting some things in a, in a hat and drawing them out blind as a, like a raffle. That would not be considered favoritism, and we have talked to Public Works about it, and they've actually said, you know what, that's a great idea. We would, that would be perfect. Then you're not showing favoritism for somebody. We've thought about buying the gator bags ourselves, but we just, again, we can buy the gator bag, but someone has to fill it.
Sure, no, right, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I, I was just curious in terms of like what the, I mean, what the total quantity of trees is in a given year, and I guess it would fluctuate, because if we're looking at, especially the first year, but the first few years, I'm just, I'm curious, is it, is it ten trees a year, is it twenty trees, is it fifty trees, like I?
Yeah, it's probably between ten and twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends on where we can find places to put them. This year, we were able to plant probably almost triple what we normally do, but that's because a large percentage went to Kane County. And they actually did put gator bags on them immediately, and they have a watering truck that they go around with. Public Works has that same thing, but again, it, it's hard for a staff member to just go water trees, so they, they try to use an intern or somebody, but until that person's on board, and then there's always something else that is very important to do, so. We just, what we need to do is a better job of communicating between ourselves, Public Works, and, and maybe the, the business where the tree goes in front of, and asking them if they would come out and water the tree. But most businesses don't have a hose and a, and a, and a turnkey at their beck and call. I was fortunate one day to be, I was coming down with my bucket to try and figure out what to do, and there was somebody from the beautification committee watering the planters off of the post office. So I introduced myself, I said, "Do you mind?" He's like, "Go ahead." So I don't know if I was supposed to say that or not, but.
Well, it's all on TV now, Jay.
It is now.
Well, I guess.
We're going to miss you terribly.
Yes.
As has been brought up, um, I wonder if it might be possible for us, I, this is not something I have a lot of expertise in currently, but I wonder if it's possible for us to see if there's any room for some synergy between this program and the beautification program, because obviously they're both benefiting the downtown as well as all of Geneva. Um, and if that's where the predominant number of trees are, I imagine those plantings need access to water, and I don't know how that works. But anyway, so I, it, it seems like a very reasonable ask and an important investment for us to try to back up if there's a way to do that, so, um.
Yeah, I, I love.
Yeah, I don't know what that would look like, but I'm, I'm willing to, you know, happy to try to explore what that could, what that could look like.
Appreciate, and that's why we're here, because we wanted to ask and we wanted to talk about it, because I don't, you know, we've asked Public Works quite a few times, and it's, it's hard, you know, I, I know they're busy, they've got full-time jobs, and, but you used the right word, investment. This is an investment in our infrastructure, because trees provide a lot of great things for our city. I think one of the things that makes Third Street so popular for people to shop are the trees. I believe so, because it's very humanistic, there's shade, you can sit. They, you know, they just, they're, they're your friends, they're, they're great to be with. So I think that's what makes Third Street so dynamic, are the trees. In the first year, we planted some trees there, we had a couple people like, "Oh, you might find five or six." We found thirty-six places that we could plant trees. Yeah, so, but we work with Public Works to make sure the utilities aren't impeded, and, you know, we know there's a couple places where tents are set up for festivals, so we don't plant a tree there. And sometimes when we do plant a tree and COVID hits and somebody wants to put a tent over it because of their outdoor restaurant, they lop off the top. You know what? That tree's still alive. Unbelievable.
You know, I think that was Frankenthal.
Yeah, so anyways, but those are, yeah, those are all great questions, and again, we'd love to have a conversation to further the, the whole idea of how we work together.
Yeah, well, again, I think, I think it's a worthwhile investment, um, and, and something that I think that there, there probably is a way to, to try to make some progress on.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Jay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And to all of you, thank you very much. If we don't see you before the twenty-fourth, we'll definitely see you on the twenty-fourth.
Excellent.
And I'll, I'll do the door again, so.
Oh, one more quick thing. So the NRC, NRC started a really cool thing called the lecture series. So every couple months, we do a lecture, we, you know, talk to someone in there at the library. So I think the next one is, it's a really great topic, and it's a wonderful speaker, from what I've heard.
Okay, who is it? Oh, it's Jay?
He's going to be talking about native plants and the residential landscape.
Ah.
Yeah, but we're going to also then, uh, the following one is going to be the preservation partners to talk about the Japanese garden, because they're having problems with the, uh, the pond, it's leaking. So we want to try and see if we can give them a spotlight to shine a light on what their problem is, and maybe they can find somebody with deep pockets that would help them as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thanks. Hopefully we didn't take more time than we needed.
You guys definitely want to stick around for this next part. Item D is the public hearing. I'm going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing concerning the intent of the city council to sell not to exceed thirty million dollars in general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source. There's a motion by Alder Person Bowery, is there a second? Second by Alder Person Patchkey. All in favor of opening the meeting, please indicate by saying aye. The meeting is open. Comments are for those joining us this evening. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment, ask a question regarding this item, you are welcome to do so. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Alder Person Marks, Alder Person Mayor, all in favor of closing the public hearing on this item, please indicate by saying aye. The public hearing is closed. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments tonight? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Ooh, Alder Person Patchkey makes the motion, Alder Person Casarog makes the second. Clerk Kellick, please take the role.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
And, uh.
And Mayor Burns?
Aye. So with a vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump to item number eight, municipal bills per payment. We kindly asked our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration, and then we will fend off who wants to play the role of Alder Person Bruno tonight in offering the motion.
The bills total $4,588,448.45.
Silence falls over the council chamber.
I knew that we paid the bills, the individual amounts for which can be found in the packets or on the city's websites.
Do you have a cheat sheet there?
That's great.
Is Bruno texting you in the middle of the meeting? There's a motion by Alder Person Bowery to approve the bills as presented, which are available in the council members' packets and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Alder Person Marks makes the second. Roll call vote, Clerk Kellick.
Hi.
Bowery? Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of 9 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 1 absent, the bills have been approved for payment. We jump to, check this out. Item number nine, which there is none, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We jump to item number 11, public comment. Is there anyone joining us this evening who would like to address the council on any topic? This is your chance to do so. Good evening, sir. This is your chance to speak. This is our chance to listen. We welcome your commentary, but we do remind you that we will not be engaging in any sort of discussion or debate regarding whatever it is you'd like to bring to us.
All right.
So, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Whoop. Sorry. All right, here we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the Friends of the Fox River, Gary Swick. I think Geneva should be very proud of their commitment to being part of a green and sustainable community. Mayor Burns chairs the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and its Environment Committee. You belong to the Greenest Region Compact. You have established several green initiatives. You have the NRC for 20th anniversary with their Tree Initiative, and we appreciate their loyal support of It's Our Fox River Day with their annual cleanup. Friends of the Fox has advocated for dam removal for 30 years. This has been consistently supported by decades of local research. Regardless of the science, misinformation has continued to confuse the uninformed. Mayor Burns actually once correctly referred to dam removal as the Third Rail. It has always been a contentious issue. Friends of the Fox offers our encouragement and support to the Geneva City staff and council members to opt for the removal for the Geneva Dam. We welcome any opportunity to work with you through the process, from any questions that you have to helping you with public outreach. The Fox River status of being designated as an impaired water requires the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to develop a plan to address the conditions of high phosphorus, low dissolved oxygen, nuisance algae, and habitat degradation. For communities with an IEP-A discharge permit, taking action is not an option. How you address it is an option. In 2001, the Fox River Study Group was created to study and develop that plan, the Fox River Implementation Plan. After extensive monitoring and field research, in 2015, the Step One recommendation was the implementation of a phosphorus limit of 1 milligram per liter at wastewater treatment plants. Geneva is among the major communities that have met that with a significant infrastructure investment. Collectively, for the nine towns, it's about $150 million. In 2022, the Fox River Implementation Plan, Step Two recommendations, was for dam removal. Dam removal for river restoration is not new, but it is rapidly growing movement nationally. Just last year, 60 dams were removed in the United States. And federal funding just this year has been significantly increased. The recent result of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study has significantly changed our local situation. For several years, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources has encouraged and partially funded the removal of several dams in northeastern Illinois. The Army Corps plan is offering 65% of removal costs, and the IDNR will cover 35%. It should be noted that neither the Army Corps nor the Illinois Department of Natural Resources are pressuring communities. But what they would like is for communities to sign a non-binding letter of intent so that they can go to Washington and secure the necessary funding. However, if a community does not sign on now, and that would be by April, they will not be considered for support in the future. It should also be noted that the IDNR will require communities with a dam owned by the IDNR, like Geneva's, to assume ownership and all responsibility if they opt for non-removal with the Army Corps. Based upon the over 1,000 public comments received by the Army Corps during the 60-day period, there is an overwhelming public support for dam removal. Opposition seems to be very isolated to private voters using a public resource or based upon misinformation. Dam removal is the most effective, economically sensible, and environmentally impactful action available to address the impaired water designation. The federal state agents and state agency has come to us with study findings and an offer to provide financial support for something that is inevitable. Dam maintenance is a regular municipal expense. The public safety liability is very real, and the Geneva Dam has a very bad record. This offer is kind of like a federal disaster relief. This year, the Fox River was designated a U.S. Parks Service National Water Trail. That's something that we can certainly be proud of. Being removed from an impaired water status is also something to be very proud of. Never thought it would happen in my lifetime. Geneva has an opportunity to be known as a river destination for Chicagoland visitors. I would like my legacy to be the restoration of the Fox River, and I hope you will join me in making that yours. Let's do this. Friends of the Fox River welcomes the opportunity to meet with any staff or council members to discuss the dam removal research and any perceived challenges. And I couldn't figure out how to send this to everybody, so I sent it to, is that Stephanie? The city administrator, and asked her to distribute that. So, I know it's not time for comments or questions, but I'll make myself available to you anytime for a one-on-one conversation or however you want to do that. But I'm about just getting people's questions answered so you can form your own opinions and make really good decisions. But I've been, I don't pray, but I've been praying for this for a long time, and I'm hoping it's gonna be a reality. And Geneva's set up really well for this. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Swick. Anyone else? How about new business? Anyone from the dais? You have new business? Anyone else on the dais have new business before I turn the floor over to our city administrator? City Administrator Dawkins.
And so, I wanted to let you all know, so a week ago, Rita and I participated in our, it's kind of every couple of years, Moody's looks at the city's financial forecast and rates us. And part of this is the due diligence on the, what is it, a biannual basis? And then we'll be doing this again in January for the electric, for the bonds that the public hearing was just had. But just this afternoon, at like 5 o'clock, we received the press release that Moody's has upgraded the city of Geneva's Illinois issuer in general obligation unlimited tax ratings from a A, big A, little a, 1, to a big A, little a, 2. As of fiscal 2023, April 30th year-end, the city has about $10 million in GOLT, which is the general obligation unlimited tax debt outstanding. And they said that the rationale reflects the strong and improving financial position driven by growing tax revenues and strong fiscal management. So, for those who don't know what the ratings are, the next rating is a AAA. So, we are just one notch away from that. I would tell you that that's more difficult as a non-home rule community to reach that. But I think you all should be very proud of what you've done over the last few years in building up some of our reserves and in some of our fiscal policies, a credit to the staff and everyone else. But I think this is a real night to celebrate that the city's rating has been upgraded to an AA 2. So, I just thought we would share that information.
Thank you very much. Director Cruz, thank you for your leadership and stewardship as well. In particular, and of course, to City Administrator Dawkins and the entire team. Before we adjourn, anyone else, new business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Alder Person Marks makes that motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and we will just take a moment to transition to the Committee of the Whole Meeting under the tutelage of Alder Person Kilburg.
Good evening. I'd like, I'd like to welcome you to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2023. I believe this will be our final meeting of the year. My name's Dean Kilburg. I'll chair this evening's meeting. Item two, approve the special committee of the whole minutes from November 27th, 2023, and regular committee of the whole minutes from December 4th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Kassarog, seconded by Mayor. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Let the record also show that Alderman Bruno is not in attendance for the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Item A, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of one rescue boat from Milpro Marine LLC at the cost not to exceed $25,980. Is there a motion? Moved by Bowery and seconded by Patchkey. Would you give us a summary?
Sure. So, the boat number two is now 15 years old and has recently failed and is permanently out of service. The industry standard for service of life of a rubber rescue boat is 10 years, and this replacement has been delayed due to COVID, supply chain issues with the boating industry. So, for your consideration this evening, the boat option recommended for purchase is the same size and power as boat number one, making both boats well-suited for rescue operations on the Fox River and surrounding waterways. And as stated on the agenda, Milpro Marine provided the best quality and cost combination from five vendor quotes that were received and reviewed. And we do have with us this evening Chief Antonori, if you have any additional questions regarding the purchase of the boat.
Any questions of the chief? If not, I take it we're prepared to vote. Would you please read the roll?
Bowery?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
It's unanimous, 9-0. Item B, consider draft resolution awarding bid and contract for the Old Kirk Road Distribution General Construction to IHC Construction Companies LLC in the amount not to exceed $2,471,927. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Marks, seconded by Mayor. Commentary on this?
So, bids were advertised and opened for the general construction of the Old Kirk Road Distribution Project, which consists of construction of two underground feeders from Geneva Business Park to Kirk Road and Fabian Area. Five bids were received, and after Stanley Consultants' review, IHC was the low bidder. As such, the recommendation is to award the contract to IHC and authorize the city administrator to approve change orders not to exceed 10% of the contract price. With us this evening, we do have Superintendent Holton, who may, can answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions to Superintendent Holton? Sorry to take you out tonight.
Please read the roll.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Unanimous, 9-0. Item C, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of Amendment Number Five to the Operation and Maintenance Agreement with Caterpillar Power Generation LLC. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Bowery, seconded by Marks. Commentary?
So, since the Geneva Generation Facility was completed and brought online in 2005, the city of Geneva has utilized Caterpillar Power Generation Systems to operate and maintain the plant through the summer run season. This arrangement has proved beneficial to the city. Caterpillar has delivered high reliability in its operation of the plant each year. This reliability has realized significant savings for Geneva's electric utility customers. The plant performance for the 2023 season equated to approximately $1.7 million in savings on capacity and transmission costs for the 2024 billing. The current contract expires on May 14th, 2024. In addition to the actual operation of the plant, the city of Geneva also utilizes factory technicians to maintain the plant, perform upgrades, and scheduled and unscheduled maintenance within the same contract. If necessary, we are also able to avail ourselves of the Caterpillar factory technicians at other times throughout the year under the same terms and conditions. So, the recommendation before you this evening is to continue using Caterpillar Power Generation Systems for operation and maintenance of the Geneva Generation Facility during the summer months of '24, '25, and '26. And again, I do have Superintendent Holton in the audience with us tonight, if you have any additional questions.
I had one question. This'll justify you coming tonight. As it relates to the long-term assessment of the facility and looking at necessary equipment that needs to be changed out over the next decade, have, has Caterpillar provided us leadership in that regard? And has this been an item that has come into play at all with our facility's assessment?
Not for the facility's assessment. We follow the Caterpillar's recommended maintenance program that was provided by the factory. We're pretty low utilization compared to how that plant is constructed. So, we have a ways to go until we hit any major rebuilds. But the Caterpillar technicians, when they're on site, they look all that over and let us know where we're at.
Have we had any major expenditures out there over the last four or five years at all?
I think the last one was a couple of years ago, we did an upgrade on the fuel injection system. That was the last major expenditure we've had.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. If not, we're prepared to vote. Would you please read the roll?
Bowery?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
It's unanimous, 9-0. Item D, consider draft resolution authorizing supplement Number Three for the Kautz Road Phase II Design Engineering Agreement with Trans Systems of Geneva, Illinois, in the amount of $8,969. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Marks, seconded by Patchkey. Commentary?
So, Resolution 2020-81 authorized a Phase II Design Engineering Services Agreement with Trans Systems Engineering and authorized the city administrator to approve up to 10% in change orders. The project is scheduled for an April 2024 bid letting and has generated two work orders to date. The first change order redesigned the pedestrian path and drainage structures, and also eliminated land acquisition needs north of Geneva Drive, and allowed for a collaboration with the Fox Valley Commerce Center for Detention. The second change order was due to updating waste clearances required by IDOT. These change orders were utilized, the city utilized the city administrator's authorization. So, for your consideration this evening, is a third change order to provide additional hours to manage the Rebuild Illinois Grant and the recently awarded Surface Transportation Program Grant. With us this evening is Director Babica to answer any additional questions you may have.
Do we have any questions in regard to this item? If not, please read the roll.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Nine, zero. Item E. Consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a, of a joint funding agreement for construction for the Kautz Road Reconstruction Project. Moved by Bowring, seconded by Mayor.
Okay, so you'll notice in your packet, we created one summary for the next two items because they are related, but there's just two, two separate actions that the council would need to take. The, this is all in reference to the Kautz Road Reconstruction Project. As you may be aware, this is a joint project with the city of St. Charles, with sixty-eight percent of the project is within the city of Geneva. So the project was awarded federal and state grants, which require a joint funding agreement for construction work with I dot. The engineer's estimate for the project is approximately six point nine million, including construction and engineering fees. The projected grant funding is four point nine seven million, with Geneva's portion estimated to be one point three five million. Funding for Geneva's share will utilize the one point four million Rebuild Illinois Bond Funds awarded to the city in two thousand and twenty. In addition, for consideration is a local, and so this would be item number F, is a local public agency engineering services agreement with Trans System Engineering to oversee construction. Their scope of work includes phase-three construction engineering, construction management, and administration. Geneva's portion is estimated to be approximately four hundred thousand, with a portion to be reimbursed by St. Charles. So if you have questions on either of these items, we do have Director Babica in the audience with us this evening.
Okay. This is a project with construction set for between next May, hopefully, and November of two thousand and twenty-four. It's a major up, upgrade and improvement of Kautz Road, running roughly from the entrance to Prairie Landing, the golf course, to essentially the entrance to the DuPage County Airport. And as was said, Geneva is undertaking about a little over two-thirds of the expense of the project, St. Charles about a third. And again, this is a sizable project, seven million dollar project, and this is something that, that we've been looking at for a few years. Is there any questions of Mr. Babica? Please read the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Nine, zero. Item F, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a local public engineering services agreement for the Kautz Road Reconstruction Project. Is there a motion to approve? Bowring? Pashke? Okay. Commentary you've already given as it relates to item F. Again, this is the engineering piece, and as was said, Geneva's portion, four hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, St. Charles' portion on the engineering, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. And all the detail as it relates to this can be found on page two, two sixty-six of your packet. Any other questions? If not, please read the roll.
All right. Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Nine, oh. Anyone as far as public comment, item four? Item five, tonight we have a need to go into a closed session on the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, five I L C S one twenty slash two C six. Also, discussion of closed session minutes for semi-annual review, five I L C S one twenty slash two C twenty-one. Also, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, five I L C S one twenty slash two C two. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Moved by Marks, seconded by Kassarag. Please read the roll.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Let the record show nine, zero. And for anyone interested, we will be returning from closed session, and there will be approving certain closed session minutes and approval of the destruction of certain closed session audio recordings pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two dot zero six C. We'll, please vacate the room, and then we'll be in closed session in a minute or two. This is Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're returning from closed session. We are now in open session to approve certain closed session minutes and approve the destruction of certain.
We need just a simple motion going back into open session first, generally.
Okay. Move to go to the open session. Seconded by Marks. Swanson? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in open session to approve certain closed session minutes and approve the destruction of certain closed session audio recordings pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two dot oh six C. Is there a motion to, so, return to open session and discuss the items that we are in the process of releasing? Moved by Marks, seconded by Kassarag. Okay.
So I'm going to read the list of the minutes and audio that the council will vote to release. So these are the city council closed session minutes approved for release on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, assuming council votes in that in favor. So number one, partial on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the purchase or lease, lease of real property. Number two, partial minutes of July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one regarding purchase or lease of real property. Number three, partial from June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, the purchase or lease of real property. Number four, a partial on July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, for the purchase or lease of real property. Number five, the full minutes from October third, two thousand and twenty-two, which is the purchase or lease of real property. Six, we have the minutes of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, which is a review of closed session minutes and the purchase or lease of real property. Number seven is partial from December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, purchase or lease of real property. Number eight, the full minutes of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the purchase or lease of real property. And number nine, a partial release of the June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes, review of closed session minutes. And then also, we are requesting approval of destruction of closed session audio recordings from January two thousand and twenty-two through June of two thousand and twenty-two.
Moved?
Moved by.
We already had a motion.
We had a motion.
Are there any questions on the release of minutes and the destruction of recordings? If not, we're prepared to vote. Please read the roll.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
It's unanimous, nine, zero. Okay, it takes us to new business. Any new business? Anyone wants to share?
I'll just say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everybody.
We'll see you back in here in January. I think we're, our next meeting will be on a Tuesday night.
We are not meeting on January second?
Oh, we're meeting.
Oh, but the next one is Tuesday because it's Martin Luther King.
Yeah.
Unless we have one on the eighth, but we're probably won't, so.
Okay.
So right now, we're.
So in other words, the schedule that you'd sent out previously is still in force?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I guess you want these, you want these minutes back, right?
You can keep those if you want, or I'll take them and shred them because they're the ones being released. There's.
Okay, moved to adjourn by Kassarag. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.